Good morning, everyone. We'll call to order the March 20, 2025 meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. All three commissioners present, I will ask Mr. David Morgan to get us in the public. Mr. Morgan, there's a lot of unfamiliar faces today, so I had to go on a familiar face. Thank you for leading us in that. Alright, so I'll start talking about a couple initiatives that we have regarding economic development in the county and a follow-up on the SPS fire, which many of you have heard about in our previous meetings. And of course, it was a major event that happened in Montgomery County with the worst fire we've ever seen at SPS Technologies in Abington. Unfortunately, on Friday, about 250 workers got their notices to be laid off because the company cannot operate right now. Many of the workers there have worked there for decades. And thankful, originally when we spoke to the company about a month ago, it looked like the workers would have until March 17th, they now have until May 18th in terms of being paid in addition to severance. So what's important for us as a county, and I want to thank Steve Forster, our Commerce Director, is that we're working every day to make sure that those employees can find a place to land, can find work. And for those of you who don't know about SPS, I mean, they've been in Abington for 100-plus years. They invented the hex wrench, they make the fasteners, nuts and bolts for airplanes. And the entire aerospace industry is really on hold if they don't function. They make about 700 different parts that are critical for the industry. So they've got to get up and running. We're here to support them in site location. It'll take about six months to understand whether they can rebuild at the site that they're at. We're going to be in close touch with the CEO and the team there. And I want to thank Steve for maintaining that communication. We have a job fair that's going to happen on April 4th, is that right, Steve? April 4th? April 3rd, April 3rd. So we're going to have a number of employers. I want to thank all of the employers who stepped up. We've gotten phone calls from companies and manufacturing. One had 80 open positions that they were looking to fill. So we hope to play a critical role in convening these employers and supporting them so that people don't have to move out of Jamestown and Abington and can stay in the community and continue doing the bigger work that they're doing. So that's the update on SPS. And again, thank you to everyone in the Commerce Department who's working on that. So a new initiative, which really has grown out of the work that Steve Forster has been doing, and a recognition that there's a lot of uncertainty out there in terms of businesses, whether it's the tariffs, renewable energy, tax credits. I was at PDC Machines yesterday, a really incredible company here in Monco, founded by side ops, all who immigrated here in the 70s, built the company out of his garage. They make, they're a leader in clean energy. They make a very innovative hydrogen gas compression technology, which allow vehicles, for example, forklifts, there's subterranean buses that are being explored right now that are zero emissions. The only thing they have in terms of their emissions is water vapor. And they've had great success. Lincoln Financial Field has one of their hydrogen compressors. They sell these all around the world. And when they were doing the World Cup tour for Philadelphia, they showed that they're going to be moving people around on hydrogen-powered buses when that happens. And we've launched a pilot program. But there's a challenge because there's a number of federal tax credits that made renewable energy more viable and help us get on the path to transition renewable energy and zero emissions technologies like this one. But those are all uncertain right now, the tariffs are uncertain. But when we met with the leadership of PDC, one of the ways they thought we could help as a county is in the workforce space, making sure that we give pathways to people in Monco to have the training, to work at facilities like PDC and others. And I want to highlight one employer in particular, Clemens Food Group, that is in Montgomery County, led by Craig Edsel, who couldn't be here. But he's going to be leading a roundtable that we're hosting. And what they did at Clemens was they came up with about over 100-plus ways to retain and grow their workforce. And they implemented about 50 different groundbreaking strategies to do that at their own company. So what Steve is doing at the Commerce Department will be launching an initiative called the Business Breakthrough Initiative, where we convene local businesses, where we share ideas, where we give them the tools they need to learn from each other and continue to expand and grow and maintain their excellent workforce. So that's an initiative we're really excited about. We have a number of roundtables that we've set up. And Craig from Clemens Food Group is going to be leading one of those. And so the announcement here is if you're a business owner, if you work in a business and are a leader there or an entrepreneur, please reach out to the Commerce Department because we want to convene a number of businesses together, learn from each other, so that we can continue to make sure they thrive in the face of all the uncertainty and challenges that they may have right now. So I'm excited to see that initiative launched. And really want to encourage everyone to reach out to our Commerce Department to participate in that. And you know, the underlying goal is just to ensure that Montgomery County maintains a place where we have world-class businesses like SPS, PDC, that are exporting, that are creating jobs here, that are innovating in all different sectors. And that's already happening, but we want to make sure we continue through an uncertain time. So another announcement is one. We have a number of positions on the Salary Board today that pertain to Act 44. So Act 44 was a bill passed just last year by the Pennsylvania Legislature, signed by Governor Shapiro. And we have a number of positions that are going to help us implement this act. And what it needs to do is stop the cycle of recidivism. This pertains to our criminal justice system. Over the last 10, 15 years, people have seen a great recognition to transform the way we handle criminal justice from one that is more punitive to thinking further about not just rehabilitation, but ensuring that we're actually keeping people safe while not unnecessarily incarcerating or punitive incarcerating people who pose no threat to society. And we can actually get people back on their feet as valued members of our community and contribute in many different ways. So what Act 44 does is it ensures that for those who are on probation, they can be assessed with some level of regularity at the halfway point of their regulation, if not sooner, to ensure that there may be ways for them to early terminate their probation so that they can find work, so that they can be fully returning citizens and take care of their families in many cases. So in Pennsylvania, 54% of prison admissions were actually related to supervision violations. And that's more than the admissions for new crimes. So most people going back to prison were actually in relation to probation violations. So what Act 44 does is it makes sure we're assessing those. It makes the process more fair. And that all happens at the state level. So what's important for us at the county level is to ensure that we put in place the resources in the DA's office, in the courts, in the defense, so that they can assess those cases individually and make sure we're making the right decisions in terms of whether someone can come off of probation and whether they're eligible for that. So today, we have a number of positions that will put us in compliance, help us comply with Act 44. And the one thing I would say is we are paying for those positions, right? They're coming out of the county budget. If there's a message that I would convey to the state is that it's going to be challenging for a number of counties across the Commonwealth to actually live up to the promise that they've enacted in Act 44. So my hope is that they would fund this. And so we are going to keep track of how much we're spending to ensure that we follow through with Act 44. And we'll convey that to our state legislative leaders, we'll convey it to the governor's office. And we hope that as they do multiple iterations and follow-up of Act 44, perhaps they can help counties out in terms of the funding to make sure that this compromise happens. And on the whole, I think we all have a shared goal of more people, the support that they need to be returning citizens, to contribute, to support their families, and certainly make accurate individualized assessments as to whether someone should be incarcerated or not. And that's something that happens with the DA, with the public defender and the courts. So on that note, I want to thank, I know, hopefully they're still watching. There's a number of 75 middle schoolers downstairs. Hopefully I didn't put them to sleep. But they're here visiting the district attorney's office. The detectives are putting through a very interesting crime scene situation. I think they already did that this morning or about too soon. And it's important for us, all three of us who are just down there conveying that the kind of work that we do in public service, and I hope that they think about public services, they think about their futures. But I think it's a great program that the district attorney does to engage with the young people, to tell them about the great work that is being done at the county. So I want to thank all of them and shout out to all the students of Haverford School who are here today. Finally, from my comments, I have a number of Way to Go winners who are members of our county employees and staff, or county, who are county employees and members of our staff that have been nominated to be recognized for the great work that they're doing. And I'll start with Heather Jocin, who's an intake caseworker supervisor in the Office of Children and Youth. Heather, are you here today? She might be, okay, she couldn't make it, she's working very hard. Heather is a dedicated supervisor who empowers her staff to advocate for residents served by OCY. She's an empathy and is an incredible positive asset to the team and the community. Thank you to Heather. We'd also like to thank Keith Richards from Public Property. Keith, are you here? Keith, thank you so much. To know what everyone's thinking, you can get his autograph after the end. So Keith, it's always great to see you. You know, and I see you, see you most days. And you're always bringing, you know, a friendly attitude, you bring joy, you know, across everywhere you go. So thank you for your work in public property, absolutely, thank you. Next up is Kelly Gale, our Deputy Director of Voter Services. Is Kelly here? Thank you, Kelly. Well, the pause is necessary because voter services is very hard. It's hard work, you get thousands of calls a day. And it's the one service where 600,000, 500,000 people are seeking to use the services of the county, half of them on one day, which is very challenging, and the other half in the month leading up to it. So, you know, we're so glad to have your support. And, you know, on behalf of the 525,000 who voted, the highest number ever in Montgomery County, thank you for your service in voter services. Next is Lisa Herbstoldenski. She's the Administrative Coordinator at Assets and Infrastructure. Is Lisa here? Sir, nominator sadly is a kind, professional person who is dedicated to seeing all the work done from start to finish. She's a great team player who strives to stay organized in many projects and takes pride in her job. I know that one of the ways to do that is by using AirTable, with which I'm obsessed. For those of you who don't know, it's like Google Spreadsheets on steroids. And no, I don't own stock in it, but I'm a big fan, and so is Lisa. But I really appreciate that, you know, you're someone who's able to organize all the things happening in assets and infrastructure. And the whole team recognizes that that's critical. We've got massive projects, we couldn't do that without your skills. Thank you. And then finally, we have Teresa Harris, who is our Public Health Communications Manager in the Office of Public Health. Teresa here? So Teresa's colleagues say it's impossible to fully state the impact that she has on her peers and the county's residents. Before moving over to HHS, a little over a year ago, Teresa spent many years here in the Commissioner's Office, actually in our comms team. And before that, she was a talented member of the Sheriff's Office. So she's been in the county sometime in a number of different roles. And it's incredibly important to have a talented communicator in the Office of Public Health, where we have to disseminate important information, whether it's outbreaks of disease or actions that really affect the public health of the entire community. A county would not be in the same position with value, so thank you, Teresa. And finally, from my closing comment, I'll say that our next meeting will be Thursday, April 3rd, on the road. It will be in Lower Marion Township at 75 East Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore. And that starts at 6:00 PM. And it's really great to have our meetings on the road because more people are able to make it at that hour. I'm excited because, you know, as we said, we had our meeting close to Limerick, which is where Commissioner DeBello lives. And we have our meetings every week close to where Commissioner Winder lives. And this is finally where I'm only five or 10 minutes from the meeting. So I'm very excited about that, it's my neighborhood. And in particular, we're going to share information on voter services. We've got an exciting grant to a local open space organization that is really important for the whole county and especially in Lower Marion. And we're going to talk a little bit about open space, trails, active transportation, and more with that meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Morgan.
But before we do, we should invite the Way to Go winners.
Oh, right. Oh, we'll invite all the Way to Go winners up for photos. Just one up here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Alright, good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing? Doing okay? That's not good energy. Good morning, everyone. There we go, there we go. Thank you, Commissioner Matias, for your comments. And good morning again. So a couple of things for me, so just bear with me this morning. Some of you may remember that last December, this board voted to approve a short-term housing facility in Lansdale that will provide year-round support to individuals experiencing homelessness. I'm pleased to share that next week, we will be heading up to Lansdale to hold a groundbreaking ceremony for this new transitional housing facility. It will take place Monday, March 24th, at 1:00 PM. Housing stability and security for our residents in need has been one of my top priorities. And I know it's been a priority for this whole entire board since we came into office. I'm grateful to our partners in Lansdale Borough. I see BJ here, I know you will be there on Monday from the board, the Lansdale Borough Council. And Resources for Human Development, who will be our operator on this project, who has worked diligently to address this need in the community. We know that they're all deeply invested in doing the work that our community needs. And I want to applaud them for having the courage to stand up in this moment and ensure that we can lift up our most vulnerable friends and neighbors. So let's give Lansdale Borough a round of applause. This year-round shelter will support approximately 20 individuals at a time. And at full capacity, the shelter can reduce homelessness in Lansdale by as much as 75%. So this is a critical step in our efforts as a county to combat homelessness in Montgomery County. And this is just the beginning. I said that in December. We hope to have more shelter operations coming online in different parts of the county so that collectively, we can all do our part in supporting our most vulnerable friends and neighbors. So again, thank you to Lansdale. I wanted to, I had the pleasure of meeting Ty Michelle Spence when I was first running for office through her aunt, Deborah Spence. And I wanted to take a moment during Women's History Month to introduce everyone to Ty. She's an inspiring young woman who recently published an autobiography this year that was sold on Amazon, right? You were one of the...
Number two bestseller lists.
Number two bestseller lists, yes. So this book is titled "The Past, The Present, The Future", and it's Ty's exploration of her life living with autism and type 1 diabetes. It's an inspirational book, and it takes a look at Ty's courage and resilience she has shown in overcoming the barriers that she's faced in life. This book is one way for her to advocate, not only for herself, but for others in the community. And a portion of the book sales go to advocating for adults living with autism and preventing nursing home abuse. And we are a little pressed for time, so I won't read a chapter that's going to do that. But I want to invite Ty up to autograph a couple of books for us, if you can. So come on up, Ty. Have to sign a couple of books. I know you've been waiting for this moment, so let's do that. Alright, we've got three books signed by our author, Ty.
And there's a certificate for you to sign.
We'll get you in the middle, okay? Okay, go in the middle.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Alright, let's go.
Thank you.
Ty. Okay, thanks, Ty, for being here. All right. Alright, so all month, we've been celebrating Women's History Month through the month of March. And I'm excited that here this morning, we'll be highlighting a few women in our community. And last year I did this, I highlighted a few women-owned businesses. And so I wanted to keep the tradition because I know being a woman, a woman in any business can have its challenges. But imagine being a woman entrepreneur and trying to start a business and maintain a business. And so I wanted to, for any entrepreneur, but certainly women. So I wanted to take a moment to highlight, we've got amazing businesses throughout Montgomery County, but I wanted to highlight a few women that I've had the pleasure of getting to know, some relationships that I've had for a long time, some relationships that are new. So I'm going to celebrate a few women today. So Angela Varacona is the owner of Venga Pues Colombian Cafe, just up of the road in Narrestown. Are you here? I didn't get to, she's not here? Okay. So let me just tell you a little bit about her cafe. I'll be going there tomorrow. This Colombia Cafe is one of the world's greatest coffee hotbeds. So you'll know, you'll get some great coffee. Now, I'm not a coffee drinker, but tomorrow, I'm going to make sure I try some coffee. They also have a full menu of traditional Colombian food that is hard to beat. So if you're traveling between Narrestown and Trooper, I would highly recommend it. And the cafe is right next to the entrance of the Jeffersonville Golf Club. So I want to thank Angela and her team, and I look forward to meeting them tomorrow. So Tara Torrance, she's taking, I want to have you stand. And let's have your beautiful girls stand as well, so... So anyone heard of the biscuit lady? Anyone, I show hands? Okay. If you haven't, this is the biscuit lady. Tara. So if you haven't had the chance to stop by the biscuit lady, I was there on Saturday incognito in a sweatshirt and sweatpants, getting a biscuit sandwich for my husband. But it's right down the road in Plymouth Meeting. It's at Plymouth Road and Butler Pike. But your story in terms of how the biscuit lady came to fruition and the fact that you have two beautiful young girls that they can see their mother and all the possibilities for when they... I want to commend you for your work with the biscuit lady. And I want to invite everyone to leave here and go to the biscuit lady and have a great biscuit. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
While we're on a roll and we're talking about biscuits, we might as well talk about chocolate. So we have Connie Lawson. Connie, can you please stand for me? Connie and I have gotten to know each other over the last couple of years. But Connie is the founder of Sweet Ashley's Chocolate in Royers Ford. And she's here with us today. Connie and her husband, Rob, established this business in 2005 and have been dedicated to sharing world-class chocolate with the community ever since. So congratulations on 20 years in business. I know that's no small feat. And for Easter, right? If you're celebrating Easter and looking for some amazing chocolate, or you just want chocolate, make sure to check out Sweet Ashley. So thank you for being here. Next up is Kristen Perez, Stand Up Kristen. So Kristen and I went to Narrestown together. And we've had the pleasure of knowing each other for almost four decades. And I wanted to invite her here because she's been a... because she's been a part of my life for some time. But I've watched her growth as a business owner, as an esthetician, where she took out a small business loan. And she's built a skincare empire right here in Montgomery County. And so she owns Hush Aesthetics in Collegeville, but also has had multiple locations around the region. And she also has a skincare line called Croya. I use it for my skin. And just honored to know you, and I have seen the struggles firsthand that she's gone through to continue to build her business. I wanted to honor and recognize you and the work that you've done in our community. So thank you, Kristin. Yasmin Baker. I see you, stand up for me. Sophia, is that how you... Sophia. So Yasmin is also a product of Narsetown area public schools. And there's a hair salon on the corner right when you come before the courthouse. And I oftentimes would walk past there, and I realized it was Yasmin who I went to Narsetown with. And you've been in that building for how long? 12 years. 12 years. So she, if you're looking to get your hair done, and this is not, look, this is not an advertisement. I'm just highlighting what these women do. But she's been a staple in the Narsetown community for 12 years. And anyone that's in the hair and salon industry, like Kristin, like Yasmin, know how challenging it can be to maintain those businesses. And so I've gotten to know Yasmin, and we want to continue to uplift businesses that are in the Narsetown community. And so I really appreciate your professionalism. I respect your craft. And I want to thank you for being here so that we could honor you during Women's History Month. Addie from DeAnu. Stand. Hey. So Addie, I met for the first time today, but I did meet your brother, who is your partner, at DeAnu. It's an African-inspired clothing store right here in Narsetown. And she may not have traveled far today, yet Addie came to the U.S. from Nigeria with her family when she was just six. And Addie started DeAnu out of her apartment in 2014, and it has grown to a brand that is renowned in the fashion industry. And I didn't even know, I'm from the Narsetown area, and I didn't even know the business existed until our Commerce Department connected me. And I bought a beautiful dress to celebrate African-American, our Black History Month. And so if you're looking for some unique clothing that's comfortable, well-made, check out DeAnu. They've got an online e-commerce business, so you can just shop online. So let's congratulate DeAnu. And last but not least, but much like Connie, when I was running for office, I met Deb Spence from the Pottstown area. And I wanted to take a minute to recognize Deb Spence, who has become a go-to real estate broker in this area with her company, Fierce Realty. Fierce is based out of Ballack Kinwood, but Deb has earned a reputation as a real estate leader throughout our county, throughout our region. And her roots are in Pottstown, and she really cares about the Pottstown community. She's built, you know, a thriving career in a very competitive and challenging environment, especially in this moment. And I want to thank Deb for her leadership and being in a business that is real estate that is oftentimes predominantly men, but we're seeing the work that Deb is doing in the community. So let's congratulate Deb. So I'm going to invite all the women that we just honored, and there's so many more businesses out there, so we're going to keep this tradition. Let's invite them up for a picture. A couple more. I also want to take a moment. At the last school meeting, we took time to honor some amazing women that are doing great work in our county workforce. So I wanted to honor, first up is Lisa Noaker. Is she here? Deputy Director of Procurement. So Procurement is an office that is often goes under the radar. It oversees the contracts the county has with private vendors that help us deliver on our services to residents. Lisa is described as a woman of inspiration by her peers. She is tactful, she's a creative problem solver, who has earned the respect of coworkers, partners, and vendors. Her leadership inspires strength, confidence, and resilience in her team. And she sets an example of professionalism and integrity, which you need in that office, in any office, but especially in that one, for the entire procurement office. Lisa, I want to thank you for your leadership. How long have you been with the county? 35 years. So we want to give you your flowers. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your service to Montgomery County. So let's give her a round of applause. I'd also like to recognize a very deserving county employee, Edgar. Edgar, OK. Thank you for correcting me. People mess up my name all the time. She is a GIS Coordinator with our Board of Assessments Appeal Team. For anyone who doesn't know, this is the team that values and assesses all real estate in the county, municipal, and school tax purposes. You might think that isn't a popular team with our residents, but I actually received a handwritten letter from a resident commending you on the tremendous customer service during tax season last year. So I'm going to read just a little bit of this. This letter is not about what she did, but rather how she did it. She listened carefully, she showed patience, and she gave us guidance for the next steps. This is to ensure that our submissions would be in compliance. Our work with her took place over several months by email, by telephone, extending it into the heart of tax season. And so I'm going to make sure you get a copy of this letter. Did you receive this letter? Do you have, did you receive a personal thank you? It's from, let's see, Shirley Dennis. Do you remember them? I'm going to make sure you, it's OK if you do. I'll make sure you have this, because it's really a thoughtful letter that speaks to the work that you do with our Board of Assessments. So I want to congratulate you and honor you for Women's History Month. So let's give her a round of applause. I'm going to invite you both up for a picture. Thank you, congrats again.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm almost done, I promise. All right. So finally, March 31st is Transgender Day of Visibility. It's a time when transgender and non-binary individuals are increasingly targeted by harmful rhetoric and proposed policies. I just want to make it clear, I say this all the time, discrimination, harassment, and exclusion have no place in Montgomery County, no matter who you are. We will continue to work to protect all residents of this great county, including transgender residents and others from the LGBTQIA+ community from hateful and ignorant attacks, discrimination policies on a federal level, and other actions that hurt some of our most vulnerable, some of the most vulnerable people in our community. So I want to invite Beth. Is Beth here? Beth up to talk a little bit about the importance of this day. So Beth, you can stand right there. So Beth is on our, no, it's OK, it's OK, you can... That's all right. So Beth, before you get started... So Beth is one of, I believe, we have 20 people on our Commission for LGBTQ+ Affairs. And so Beth, I want to thank you for stepping up to be a part of the new commission that's just starting to meet and starting to think about the work. I wanted you to just take a couple of minutes to talk about the importance of this day.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Winder, and for the whole commission. And it's nice to see a whole room full of people from Montgomery County. My name is Reverend Beth Eustace. I'm the pastor at St. James United Church of Christ in Limerick. And I am also the mother of an out and proud gay man. And I'm very pleased and proud to be selected to be on the Commission of LGBTQIA Affairs. And I would like to read our official statement condemning recent activity targeting the transgender community. At a time when transgender and non-binary individuals are increasingly targeted by harmful rhetoric and proposed policies, we stand firm in our unwavering dedication to ensuring the rights, dignity, and well-being of all members of the LGBTQIA community. Discrimination, harassment, and exclusion have no place in Montgomery County. As a commission, we will actively work to promote equity, advocate for inclusive policies, and create opportunities for education, dialogue, and community building. We are driven to be an effective representation in the county of our community. Transgender people have always and will always be a part of the makeup of our county and Commonwealth. Words on paper, even if that paper comes from the highest office in the federal government, will never change that. Commission Chair Morgan Selkirk stated, "As a commission, we condemn these hateful and ignorant attacks on some of the most vulnerable people in our community. We thank our county commissioners for standing by the LGBTQIA+ community as we navigate through this barrage. Our newly-formed commission promises to be a resource to the county in many ways and are actively organizing our next steps now." Vice Chair Keith Willard added, "Our commission will collaborate with elected leaders, organizations, and residents to foster an environment where everyone in our community can live authentically without fear. We are committed to do our part to help make a Montgomery County a model for diversity, equity, and inclusion in the Commonwealth. Together with your support, we will ensure that Montgomery County is a safe, affirming, and welcoming home for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. And I want to, you know, thank the commission and those that continue to have the courage to speak up and speak out, because regardless of who you love, what you look like, how you pray, Montgomery County needs to be an inclusive place for everyone. And so we'll continue to stand by those values. So thank you, Beth, for being here.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner DeBello.
Good morning. First off, I want to congratulate all the women-owned businesses that are here this morning. I was great job recognizing them. I did hear about the Biscuit Lady. Unfortunately, she left, and I wanted to get over there and try, because I heard they're really, really good. Yeah, I mean, so...
I'll take it.
But we have to go over for biscuits. And I will say, I don't know a lot about the other businesses that were mentioned today, but it's really exciting to hear the successes that are happening all around us. But I will also have to give a shout-out to Sweet Ashley Chocolate, because it's in my neighborhood. And if you haven't had or tried her chocolate, you're missing out. So if you're ever up in the Limerick area, I mean, she's right off of 422, and, you know, take the opportunity to go in, and she has a wide variety of nice, very healthy, because her chocolate is healthy. Healthy treats. With Easter right around the corner, I'm sure she'll be more than happy to, you know, give you all of your Easter basket little treats. So that's really exciting as well. You know, we've talked a lot about, you know, the SPS fire and all of the volunteers that were there that over the, I don't know how many days, I lost track, three, four, five days, addressing that, probably what we believe was the biggest fire in Montgomery County's history. And, you know, we've talked about this where 95 or plus percent of the firefighters that showed up on-site to fight that fire were volunteers. And one of the things that we did last year as county commissioners, we did a tax rebate for our volunteer firefighters in EMS. And this was the first year of implementation. And I had the opportunity to attend the fire chiefs, the volunteer fire chiefs, meeting the other night. And, you know, we talked about some stuff. We talked about the SPS fire and all that. But one of the things that also came up was that the implementation of our tax rebate program, there seemed to have been some questions or confusion and some ideas and all that. So what I asked them to do was to consolidate all of their ideas, suggestions, or confusions into one nice, you know, paid, one-page document, whatever it may be, so that we could get that. Because, you know, this is a great program that we put in place, and we want to make sure that everyone's able to adhere or be able to utilize it very easily. So we'll be getting, we'll probably be getting that in the near future. So we'll have to take a look at and see what adjustments. And maybe some stuff will just be providing some clarity around what we needed from a rebate, tax rebate standpoint. When we put that program in place, we also hoped that school districts would follow suit and implement a very similar program. And I know some school districts throughout Montgomery County have looked at it. I believe Laura Marion has already instituted that same tax rebate program for these volunteers. And when you show up and see this fire and see how hard that they were working and how dedicated they are, it's the least we can do to pay back to the volunteers that are out there keeping us safe every day. It was just an amazing, amazing thing. Unfortunately, as Commissioner McEachy mentioned about the loss of business and people being laid off, on the flip side of that, it was amazing to watch the 65-plus fire companies that showed up work collectively together to fight, to, you know, to get that fire under control and keep everyone safe. So we, you know, we recognized them at the last meeting, and I know, I said this last meeting, and I'm going to say it again. We only see, you know, these firefighters and all this, you know, first responders. We only hear about it, or we only talk about it when there's a big event somewhere. And I say that, you know, those big events, they do this every day across Montgomery County, across the state, country. Every day, there's something going on somewhere, and they don't hesitate, and a lot of them are volunteers, and they don't hesitate to go and jump right in and address whatever's going on. So we're very, very proud to have such a dedicated team throughout Montgomery County. So I'm trying to think about how I could cut all this short so I could get over, get some biscuits. So this week, we had a Korean delegation here. They, you know, they're brought in by, all is arranged by Master Yang. If you don't know who Master Yang is, he lives over in the Lansdale area. He has a martial arts... in the Lansdale area, he has a martial arts school, but he is very, very dedicated to the Korean community and working extremely hard to help promote and help the Korean community advance here in Montgomery County. And it's always an honor to be around him, because his energy is unbelievable, and his dedication to the Korean community and beyond is just something. So he worked hard to bring his Korean business leaders here this week, they, they were all along Pennsylvania and down in Washington, they had meetings and events set up every day. They came here on Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, and we had the opportunity to have lunch with them, and the Sheriff Kalkini spent the lunch going over and explaining the Sheriff's Department and what they, you know, what they're responsible for, and talked about some of the amazing things that they do within the Sheriff's Department. After we, after having lunch, we walked across the street to the courthouse, and we went up and we visited President Judge Carolyn Caluccio, and she explained, you know, a lot of the inner workings of the courthouse and, you know, judicial system, and different levels of judges, and, you know, and the different aspects of the courts. So she did an amazing job, and then while we were there, we then went down and went into a couple courtrooms to see, you know, some cases underway, and it was funny, because they wanted to take pictures, and we said, "No, you can't, no pictures, no pictures in here." But they were, so it was, it was really something, and then we came back here, and we had a nice presentation, Commissioner McKeeshia and that, we presented them with a proclamation, and we talked with them, and talked a little bit about county commissioners. Unfortunately, not, I say, I shouldn't say unfortunately, because fortunately, Commissioner Winer was in Philadelphia getting an award and recognition for her service and her shift, but, you know, I tried to point that out as well, you know, what's well deserved. And so we spent some time, and then we moved on to have Steve Forrest from our Commerce Department talk about, you know, businesses that were, Korean businesses that we already have here in Montgomery County, different things that are going on, talked about some of our different programs, because what we're really trying to do is foster great relationships with business leadership from Korea, and see if we can bring more businesses here in Montgomery County. So it was, it was a great afternoon, and I believe that the takeaway was they're very excited, and I look forward to seeing what's ahead with our relationships with, with our, with the Korean business leaders. So fingers crossed we're able to bring some additional businesses here into Montgomery County. So then also this week was Agricultural Literacy Week, which is an initiative to try to help kids better understand, have a better understanding of our food system. Many young people, really people in general, are disconnected from the food they eat. This is an important initiative that I'm happy to support, and we all support. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I was over at Marshall Street Elementary School, right here in Norristown, and I read to students, and I read a book about explaining compost to them, and this was a great, a group of first graders, and so there was a lot of fun words in there, like worms that squirm, and so I couldn't remember some of the other ones. But it was a fun little book, and they really had a good time, and the 4-H Club members were there as well, and they did an activity of putting stickers onto a sheet of paper explaining the difference between compost, recycling, and trash. So it was, you know, it was fun to be there, it's always enjoyable when we get out as commissioners, we all, we all do it, getting to the classrooms. I know I have, later today, I'm going up to Perkyoman, Upper Perkyoman, to be at Marlboro Elementary, doing a similar activity, so it's a, it's a fun time when we're out there doing that. We have our annual Spring Clean Drive, which begins today, which I believe also today's the first day of spring, did I hear that right? And it's actually getting, it's actually a really nice day out for spring, right? So it is our annual Spring Drive, Clean Drive, that starts, runs through April 20th. This drive is a way for our Health and Human Services Office of Children and Youth to collect toiletries and cleaning supplies for families in need. There are drop boxes for these items at various county facilities, including the HHS office in DeKalb Pike, DeKalb Center, and here at One Montgomery Plaza. There's always a big need in the community for these kind of items. Most needed is deodorant, textured hair care supplies, trash bags, laundry items, household cleaning supplies like sponges, soap, and disinfectant. So consider donating the next time you're out shopping, and, you know, as always, we want to thank our Office of Children and Youth, who are doing tremendous work every day with our residents. And lastly, I just want to point out that I see in the back row is our, I can actually Women's History Month, we have our Jury Commissioner, Mary Woods, so Mary, want to stand up? So Mary's, Mary's been here for how many years now? 11 years, does a really good job over there, and we're really happy to see you here this morning as well. So I think that's all I have for my.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and let's congratulate everyone who's recognized for Women's History Month, that was really well done and inspiring to hear about all the entrepreneurs that we have. And the audience today, and of course, there are many, many more that we have to highlight, we're gonna have three presentations coming up, pretty quick ones, starting with Dean Doroetone for our quarterly financial update.
Morning Commissioners. Before I get started, I'll just, a couple comments on the tax rebate program for the volunteers. So we've received over 1,100 applications, the deadline's this Friday, so volunteers still have the opportunity to apply through the portal, and that date has been extended a few times. So, once all the applications are received, we'll begin processing those tax rebates, we'll get out on the streets.
Great.
So, real quick, before I get into the presentation, I did want to give the board an update on where we are with 2024 before we talk about the preliminary numbers. So, you know, this is an unusual time of the year for us, we're crossing calendar years, and, you know, we're on a calendar year budget, so the organization's closing out the prior year, and, you know, we've opened up the current year, '25, so we do a lot of accounting work with the Controller's Office and the rest of the organization to ensure that our books are properly reflected in terms of revenues and expense. That's ongoing, so the numbers I'm going to talk to you about today are preliminary numbers, they will change, there could be adjustments as we go through the audit process. Typically, you know, we will spend the next couple months finishing things up internally, and then our external auditors come in, complete their work, and our target date is to have our comprehensive annual financial report out the door and posted up on June 30th. That meets many of our requirements that we have within the organization. Next slide, please. So, I'm gonna talk about where we are for '24 at the moment, as I said, these are preliminary numbers. As you can see, the budget year for '24 opened up with a balanced budget, you know, it's a slight $200,000 difference between revenue and expense. However, where we are right now, we've had some unfavorable and favorable experience on both sides, revenue and expense, as you can see, overall revenues are about $400,000 higher than the '24 budget, and on the expense side, we're about 8.4 million or one and a half percent lower compared to the budget. And we come into the budget year anticipating that we're gonna outperform it, right? We shouldn't spend the budget, we should save against it. We're hopeful that revenue performance is better than what we had anticipated in the budget, and I will say that, you know, in recent years, coming out of the pandemic, our revenue base has been getting back to a better place in the various categories, so that's positive, and that's, that's, you'll see that that's reflected in the '24 numbers. So, as you can see, with the preliminary numbers, we're projecting an excess of revenue over expense of about $9 million. If that was to happen and get completed in the audit, our fund balance would be about $153 million in the general fund, which is roughly about 27% of the preliminary general fund revenue numbers. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna walk through some of the high-level variances within the revenues, but just starting out, based on the preliminary numbers, as you can see, we received about $568 million of revenue in the general fund, and, you know, slightly over 85% of that is represented by real taxes and federal and state grants. And remember, federal and state grants have an offsetting expense to them, so really, the driver of our general fund budget is in real estate tax revenue, which is slightly over 5%. Next slide, please. Just looking at it at a high level, this is a roll-up of, you know, a lot of different revenue categories, but, you know, everything that rolls up in real estate taxes, which, you know, includes current year, prior year, delinquent collections, roughly, we're just slightly off of the budget by about $500,000. This was anticipated, I'm gonna talk about this a little more into the presentation, our assessment growth in '24 was fairly flat, so we would have anticipated some slight growth, probably around a half percent, you know, which would have added some organic growth revenue to this category, however, that didn't occur. On the federal and state grants, right now, we're about $9 million less, that fluctuates from year to year, it's dependent on how the departments use the grant revenues, and, you know, some of them are multi-year grants, so if they didn't get to, you know, all the initiatives that were planned for in '24, it'll carry over into the '25 budget, that has an offsetting expense to it. Overall, departmental earnings, which encompasses a lot of things, but some of the more common things are, you know, like the commission revenues that are transactional fees in the departments, departmental fees, things like that, right now, we're about 3.3 million higher, or 6%, that's a good sign and favorable. Investment income has done extremely well in the last couple of years, primarily because the feds haven't taken drastic measures in raising the short-term rates. So, you know, coming into '24, when we were planning for the budget, we thought that there were gonna be more cuts in the short rates than what has actually happened, and, you know, they've been fairly stable. So, we outperformed budget by about 4.2 million, which is a significant amount. This is, you know, a double-edged sword, right? Once the rates start coming down, then, you know, we won't be, we won't be able to rely on that revenue as much. However, the '25 budget was adjusted, you know, for lower levels than what you're seeing here, but this is nice that it added some good performance to the overall budget for '24. And any other categories speak for themselves. Next slide, please. So, you know, I had emphasized in the beginning, right, the general fund is represented by a little over 50% of real estate tax revenue, so it's important for us to monitor what's going on with our real estate tax assessment base and the housing market in general. And what you're looking at here is a comparison of what our annual assessment growth was in '24 compared to '23. So you can see, in '23, we were almost a half percent of organic growth in the real estate assessment base, '24, 0.06%, you know, which I was calling flat. So, that was not expected. In recent years, you know, our growth rate has been between a half to three-quarters of a percent, which adds several million of new real estate tax revenue to the budget just organically. Next slide, please. So, looking at the housing market overall, the first chart at the top is just looking at the trends at the, at the end of '24, so that the 12 months for '24 versus the 12 months of '23, you can see, and this is a positive sign, because once the 30-year mortgage rates, you know, kicked up to, you know, 6% to 8% range, we saw a complete slowdown of home sales in the county, and that's, you know, something, you know, that's going on regionally too. So, but this is a good sign, even though the rates are still high, homes are selling, and we were up by about 5% comparing '24 to '23, and the average sale price was also up by about 8%. So, in the chart below, you're looking at current stats, and this all comes from Berkshire Hathaway, they put this information out by county. You can see that when you compare February of '25 back to February of '24, I have the total homes sold year-to-date, we're up 7%, which is a good sign, that's a two-month snapshot. This isn't, you know, the busy time of year for real estate sales, you know, that'll kick up, you know, May to August. But more importantly, when you look at the median sale price, right, back in February of '24, we were at $423,000, now we're at $450,000 in terms of sales that took place in February. So it's up about 6%, which is a good sign. Next, next slide, please. So turning back to the revenues, some of the major revenue variances, as I mentioned, investment income was up significantly, you know, pretty much tied to the federal short-term interest rates, they remain stable, you know, going into '25, we've, you know, been earning pretty good rates on our short-term liquid funds, so as long as those rates stay in place, we'll continue to have good experience with investment income as we go through '25. The Public Health Department, they, one of their primary grant fundings is through, and this is a recurring funding through the state, Act 315, that was 1.9 million higher, or 58%. This is one-time revenue that they typically will reallocate revenue statewide, so in some years, we do get an additional bump, but it primarily offsets expenses within the Public Health Department. Next slide. State gaming revenue has been growing significantly since it was put in place in 2018. As you can see, back in 2018, it was 1.6 million, that was our revenue base, we're now up to 6.1 million in 2024, and I expect that will continue to grow as we go through '25. So we did outperform the budget by 1.6 million, or 36%. We did rebase the '25 budget at these higher levels, but that's the kind of experience that we've had in the last five years. Some of the other revenue categories that outperformed the budget, the first one's Act 148, which is children, children and youth, the Department of Children and Youth, I mean, this, this is a little bit higher, it's, it's based on the service levels which have increased, so it does have expense that offsets it. Departmental commissions across the board, and the row offices and so forth, we're about $716,000 higher. The state offender supervision fees, which come down through the state, is roughly about $500,000 higher than what we had anticipated in the budget, that's primarily part of that's one-time revenue, was a catch-up for us from the prior years. And then departmental fees, you know, did a little bit better than we would have expected, across the whole organization, about $500,000 higher. Next slide, please. So, overall, the grant revenue category, and some of the grant revenues are broken out, like the ones I just talked about, Act 315 and others, however, grant revenue that's lumped together in our, in our revenue line item, came in roughly 14 million lower, 8% lower. As I said, this fluctuates with actual service levels, so you, you'll see an offset on the expense side, and it's typically in provider services, that's where most of this is HHS-related human health services. Next slide, please. So turning to expenditures, total expense, roughly $559 million for the general fund on a preliminary basis. What you're looking at here is how we spent the money by functional areas, and you can see, Health and Human Services, 37%, that's primarily the grant funding that you see in the general fund, is funding most of this operation. I will note on here, you see debt service at 11.4%, and we've been in that range of, I'd say, 10% to 12% of the overall general fund expenses for debt service. So, we've been managing our debt service well, as we, you know, go through our five-year capital plans every year and update them, and, you know, this is one area that's been noted by Moody's in our credit reviews, that compared to others, we're on the, on the, on the lower side in terms of the overall budget or overall actual expense of the general fund, so.
Quick question, does judicial include defender and DA, is that within judicial?
Yeah, that's in the judicial. Okay, next slide, please. So, actual expenses, as I said, I started with, were about 8.4 million or one and a half percent lower than the budget. than the budget. We have embedded in the '24 budget an $8 million negative appropriation. So this is what we plan for each year, and we have to achieve, right? This is budgetary savings that have to happen. So that is a number that's adjusted each year depending on, you know, what is going on with our budget. Going into the '24 budget, you know, we were still dealing with vacancies, higher vacancy rates across the organization. So this number's not that high in the '25 budget, and vacancy rates have come down significantly. But I will say, when you look at overall personnel, actual costs, expenditures for '24, we're about 6.9 million higher, so it offsets this, right? And a lot of it came from things that, you know, weren't totally expected, like our medical and dental health insurance costs were, you know, double digits higher than what we would have anticipated, and many of our peer counties experienced the same thing. There's some things that are going on in that industry, inflationary workforce-type of costs that have funneled through, and the use of it. We had union contract settlement costs that were not included in the '24 budget, some that went retro back to 2023 that were paid out in 2024. So that was, and that's typically, we do not budget for those types of things if we're in negotiation. And there were new positions added, some that, you know, were spoken to earlier today, where we were dealing with a similar, you know, type of thing back in '24. So we added positions in the public defender's office, the dual probation, and other departments that were not included in the budget and are wrapped into this number that you see on the screen. Next slide, please. So some of the major expenditure variances, as I said, you know, with the grant revenue down by whatever it was, 15 million, 14 million, you see provider services, you know, are down by 13.6 million, right? So they're lower than the budget, and that's relating to most of that grant revenue. It's a direct offset. Contracted services is 3 million, or 10% lower. Again, there's grant funding that funds a lot. It's not only grant-funded expenses in contracted services, but there are many of the areas that are grant-funded. This isn't really a good point, but it is what it is. Training and staff development, organization-wide, we were lower by budget, you know, by almost a million dollars. And, you know, a lot of this has to do with, you know, the timing of the departments, that they can get to all the training, you know. I'll use IT as an example, you know, they go through, you know, many certifications, and they plan for heavy training, but, you know, with turnover in new employees, they may not typically get to it. So we wouldn't expect this to be that high of a number in a normal year. Next slide, please. And these are just, you know, other areas across the general fund budget where there's favorable and unfavorable experience, right? Materials and supplies, minor equipment, mass transportation is our contribution to SEPTA, prosecution expense and equipment maintenance, they were all down versus budget for various reasons. Equipment and maintenance could be a maintenance agreement or time in materials, and maybe we didn't have to use it as much. So to my point about we should be, we save against the budget, and we should, these are some of the reasons why. And then there's other categories where we were higher. Home care providers was about a million five higher. That's the programs that helped, you know, feed those in need out in the community that qualify for this type of program, like Meals on Wheels and things like that. And the others speak for themselves. Next slide, please. So looking forward, you know, we are in an unusual time right now, you know, and I say cautiously optimistic in the short term. There are some things that are real pressure points for us, you know, the economy being the first. If there's, you know, a downturn in the economy and this housing market doesn't get to the place it was three years ago for us, you know, that would impact us in various ways in the real estate tax revenue and our assessment base. I had mentioned, you know, short-term rates and how that benefits us with investment income. You know, we're closely monitoring what the feds are doing, and we do expect cuts. Hopefully, they're, you know, not that aggressive through the end of the year, and then we'll, you know, rebase our budget based on that. And the mortgage rates are still up, you know, they're down a little bit, but they're still, you know, in a range that, you know, is keeping home sales at a lower volume than what we had experienced in the past. And, you know, the stock market performance and the volatility, that impacts us in different ways. You know, our pension fund is mostly invested in stocks and bonds, and, you know, the county does contribute to the pension plan. Over $30 million is in the budget for that. So volatility in the stock market, negative volatility doesn't help us, so we need to keep a close eye on that. And the more obvious is the political uncertainty at the federal and state level. I mean, we are heavily grant-funded in our major operations, as you could see from the numbers. So, you know, we're paying really close attention to what's going on, you know, our committed federal or state funding that's already embedded in our '25 budget to ensure that, you know, it's going to continue, and we're going to be able to complete some of the things that, you know, are already underway, and whether it's capital projects or just our normal, you know, operations that are grant-funded. Next slide, please. So we've already begun planning for 2026, and that's typical for us at this time of the year. First off, we're actively monitoring the '25 budget and planning for '26 at the same time, you know, with the new Office of Innovation Strategy and Performance. We've been working closely with that team to identify cost containment opportunities and operational efficiencies, so that when we get into our budget meetings in the months ahead, we're able to really sort through things with the departments and come forth to the board with recommendations of areas that we might be able to have change or may save some money in the operating budget. So the schedule right now is, you know, the budget will kick off, the process, the work by the departments will start mid-April and continue through mid-May. And then we have detailed departmental budget meetings with the budget team, staff leadership, and the fiscal people from each department. That'll happen between May and July. And as I said, there are detailed reviews of operating and capital proposals for '26. And at the same time, as part of the budget process, the departments are forecasting 2025, so that we can get a handle on where we think things are going to end by the end of the year as we go through this process. In the summer months and into the fall, we'll have info sessions with the commissioners to talk through the new proposals, the departmental budgets, the pressure points. Next slide, please. And then, you know, our goal and our legal requirement is to present both our five-year capital budget and our operating budgets at the board meeting on November 20th. So that's when it's formally proposed. It's then public. We have two public hearings that'll follow typically at the end of November or into December, and then adoption by laws required by the board before the end of the year, and that will typically happen at the last board meeting in December. Next slide. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions?
I have a quick question. So with all those numbers, what is the projected surplus or deficit from the 2024?
It's 9 million based on those preliminary numbers.
So roughly 9 million?
Yep.
9 million surplus.
Surplus.
Surplus. Great. So, and then, and how do we, I know it's only the first quarter, but how are we tracking to budget year-to-date and first quarter as of now, roughly?
Yeah, so it's early in the year, and I'm going to do a quarterly update once we close out March. So on the revenue side, you know, real estate tax bills go out, you know, and they're out on the streets now typically February.
Right.
We see the majority of that, or a good portion of that, come in by the end of the discount period, which would be somewhere around April 1st. So I would say, from the perspective of that major revenue, I wouldn't expect anything unusual. Our collection rates are very strong. The assessment base through February is growing in a positive way, more, it's trending more like the years prior to '24. So if that continues, then I would expect we'll probably hit, you know, that half percent natural growth rate unless something unusual comes up. On the expense side, things have been trending that are in line with the budget, nothing alarming to us. We're going to go out to market on a bond issue, as you know, that's scheduled in the next few weeks. The market's pricing the way we had anticipated coming into the '25 budget year. So, you know, obviously, we had to project what we thought the interest on that bond issue would be in the '25 budget. So I would expect that that should be in line with what's in there. And, you know, personnel, we are filling positions. We do have funding embedded in the budget to do that. And, you know, we're at the same time evaluating vacant positions as we're talking with the departments and going through some of these things that I talked about with the Innovations Office.
Yeah, because watching the bond market, I was going to ask that question, that I know we're going out to the bond in, you know, in the next couple of weeks, but watching the bond market, we should come in, pretty confident we should come in about what we're projecting, I think, at this point?
I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful nothing changes, you know, between today and when we get to market, and I don't-
I mean, it doesn't look like anything that's going to be changed.
Yeah. You just never know. I'll give you an example. You know, I was on a bond issue back in 2008. It was the fall, and it was when, you know, the recession hit. And I was at Loma del Rey at the time, and we went to market on the new money bond issue. And it was when the financial markets collapsed, the day we went to market. And we got no bids, and then we finally got one offer. And, you know, we kind of looked at each other and all said, well, what is the market? You know, do we accept this? And what do we do? We need the money for the capital plan. But, and that was an unusual-
Yeah, that's an unusual-
That's unusual. But, you know, I think we will. We should be in line with what we had projected.
Yeah, because this, you know, and you and I have talked about this, I mean, as we're preparing, going into the 2026 budget, we know we have the 16 million that we borrowed, or we utilized that at the fund balance last year to put into the 2025 budget. So that's 16 million that we need to make up in the 2026 budget. We know that we'll see about a 3% to 4% organic growth in expenses, which is roughly $24 million on our operational budget, right? So, and that puts us at $40 million. And if we follow the same over the, you know, next year, where we go to, you know, for the cap projects, if we go to bond market again next year for roughly the same 150 million or so, that's going to potentially have a $2 to $3 million change to our annual debt service. So we're, we know that we're starting 2026 with a 40 to 45 million deficit that we have to work through. So that's why this is, you know, a lot of the stuff that you're presenting today, and that $9 million surplus from 2024 and tracking in 2025, you know, we know that, you know, there's some serious decisions, there's things that we're going to have to look at very closely, you know, especially with our new innovation team, looking at a lot of the projects and initiatives and that. But, you know, 40, 45 million deficit, it's something that we really have to chip away at quickly.
Yeah, and as I said earlier, we were hopeful that we'll outperform the '25 budget. So, you know, we did on a budget basis, closed the gap with the use of assigned and unassigned fund balance. You know, hopefully, we'll end with, in a positive way, and that won't have to be utilized. But you're right, and that's what we're doing. We're looking at operations very closely at the moment. And, you know, hopefully, by the summer months we're going to have, after we get through the initial phase of the budget meetings, we're going to have a better understanding, you know, where we're going in some of these areas that you're talking about.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
So if I could just jump in. One, thank you for providing this presentation. I think it's important for us to be transparent about, you know, how we're doing financially. You know, it is a dance, right? We're running an organization. There are investments that need to be made, right, to ensure that we can continue to deliver on our promises to residents, but also doing our due diligence to really look under the hood and see where we can do, or find some organizational inefficiencies or opportunities to create cost savings. So, you know, it is, you know, I often think about, you know, coming in, there were things that had, the can had been kicked down the road for some time, and it's just a matter of, we have to, you know, make these decisions, right, which come at a cost, right? And we could all rattle off a list of things that should have been taken care of that, you know, and that's not a knock to previous administrations, but, you know, but then we also have to do our due diligence. So I'm really excited about the office, the new office that we created, and that's been well in the works, to see where we can find some cost saving. So I'm interested, you know, a quarter from now, how we can balance that out, because innovation fuels our, and investment fuels our ability to better deliver on our promises, but also, we've got to think about where we can cut some costs. So it'll be a dance, for sure.
Well, I'll tell you, we've put some valuable time in already with this group, and, you know, we're doing some good work. And I think that you'll see, you know, the results of it in the months ahead here.
I have one question, which you noted that 11.6% debt service was low for municipal counties?
On the lower side, yeah. Based on how Moody's looks at it and rates us, there's different factors.
What do you think is the average, or what would be high?
Probably 13% to 14% range would be high, higher, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't say we're low. We're lower than, we're where we should be from a debt service standpoint. I mean, when you look at it from a budgeting standpoint, if you're going to have debt service, you run around your debt service 10%, 11%, anything over that, now you start to get into other budgetary issues or concerns. So we're projecting out where, you know, if we're going to carry debt, 10%, 11% is where we, from a budgeting standpoint, where we can, it's a comfortable level. That's why, that's why Moody's looks at it favorable.
They're looking at us compared to other AAA's and, you know, I'd have to go back and revisit the report again, but it's, you know, they were noting it. They were, you know, drawing that comment out. And hey, we're going to be talking to them, you know, in another week and a half for our credit rating and-
It would be helpful to know, you know, to have a standard, to know what their standard is. I think whether it's 10 or 11 or something-
Yeah, yeah.
Different comparative, just because, you know, the question is, is are there places where we should be investing more in infrastructure and actually, you know, incurring the debt, because people want to see their roads and bridges fixed and other things like that? So just to have us, to have some objective and comparative measure of how much we should be incurring and how much we will be able to reasonably.
Yeah. I'll get the board more information. You know, we're on this topic anyhow, right? We're going to market on the bond issue. We're going to hear from Moody's again. We're going to be presenting to them. We're going to get our credit opinion. But I will all get some info together for you.
Got it. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're going to deal from our coroner, Dr. Janine Darby.
Am I doing that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, commissioners, for inviting me today to share just a brief snapshot of the important work happening at the Montgomery County Coroner's Office. So I'm Dr. Janine Darby. I'm the Montgomery County Coroner, and I had the honor of leading a phenomenal team of last responders. Yes, that's what we are called. Just as first responders are crucial at the beginning of any emergencies, we play a vital role in bringing closure and answers at the end. Next slide. Here's a photo of some of our dedicated team members. Our office is staffed with about 25 full-time and part-time professionals who are compassionate, caring, and committed to serving our community. Today, we have our senior leadership here, our chief deputy, first deputy, office manager, and program director joining us here in this room today. So thank you all for being here. So thank you all for being here as well. Next slide. The coroner's office's primary mission is to investigate all sudden, unexplained, or suspicious deaths to determine the cause and manner of death. We also issued death certificates that comes from our office. We positively identify all the decedents that come through our office as well, and we need to locate and notify those next of kin, and that's a very hard task sometimes. Securing the decedent's property, and also we approve all cremations in the county. So if you didn't know that, it has to come through our office before anybody is cremated. Next slide. So we provide 24/7 service across all of Montgomery County, north, south, east and west. We are covering all of those square miles. So each year, there are approximately 8,000 deaths in Montgomery County. However, we don't handle every, every one of those deaths. Next slide. We surface only the reportable deaths only, such as up here. We do any suspicious, unusual, questionable deaths, homicides, accidents, suicides, unidentifiable persons, and any death that happens in our public facilities. The correctional facility such as SEI Phoenix or Montgomery County Correctional Facility, any deaths in that comes through our office. And also any psychiatric facilities such as Norristown Tate Hospital. So we, we go on scenes and we also investigate all of those as well. Next slide. So in 2024, 2,834 deaths were reported to our office based on those reportable death criteria. This number reflects a return to pre-pandemic levels. As you can see here, we're trending down. Of those reported deaths, 100, excuse me, 1,148 were full coroner cases, meaning we conducted further investigation, including autopsies when necessary. And then the remaining cases were referrals, which did not require additional examination. Next slide. As I shared prior, our mission is to determine the cause and manner of death of a decedent and help provide closure to their loved ones. So the cause of death refers to the specific medical reason a person has died. And then this is determined by our board certified forensic pathologists based on investigation, autopsy findings, toxicology. And then sometimes if we're waiting for further testing, we do put the death certificate into a pending status until we know a little bit more information. So that's just a snapshot of the portion of the death certificate that our office will fill out. Next slide, thank you. The top three causes of death that we see in our office after investigation, autopsies and things are cardiac, cardiac-related conditions. As we all know, the number one cause of death is heart disease in our nation, so not surprised there. Number two is falls, and number three is drug-related deaths. Next slide. Something's missing in the circles, something's there, oh, go back. Something's missing with the slide. But anyways, the manner of death is classified, classifies the circumstance of how the death occurred. There are five manners of death, so accident, suicide, natural, homicide, and undetermined. And we put every single, we classify it in those five categories. Next slide. So this shows a nice pie chart of our manner of deaths. So 50% were classified as natural, 38% were classified as accident, and 8% were classified as suicide. And then the other ones you see there are in smaller percentages there. So despite the difficult nature of our work, which is challenging and fulfilling at the same time and rewarding, there are moments of hope and generosity. So we partnered with the Gift of Life Donor Program Organization to facilitate organ and tissue donation, helping save lives while allowing families to create a meaningful legacy to their loved ones. So we're still awaiting the 2024 donation stats, but just wanted to show you the 2023 data, which provides insights into the impact of those lifesaving efforts here. So as you can see, in the 2023 data shows, we helped save lives with 86 organ transplants and enhanced lives with 403 tissue transplantation from 39 organ donors and 192 tissue donors, respectively. Next slide. So next month is Donate Life Month, and this is our picture from last year. We were the first coroner office to raise a flag in our area, so we were very happy to do that. And Commissioner DeBello was in that picture there in the middle. So, so we are honoring donors and recipients next month with our Donate Life Flag Raising Ceremony on April 2nd at 10:30 at the coroner's office, which is located in Eagleville, Pennsylvania. So we invite you all to attend with us. Additionally, you can go to the next slide. Additionally, we are excited to welcome the community to our Spring Open House on April 11th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity to tour our state-of-the-art facility, meet our team, and also learn a little bit more about what we do. Like I said, this was just a snapshot, I didn't want to bore you with all the other details. But, you know, next slide. And this is, this is, if you need to take a picture of this, please do, take a screenshot, this is how you can contact us here. And also, please follow us on all our socia ls. We do provide updates of what's happening in the coroner's office, a lot of educational contacts, content, so we can prevent those preventable deaths. And also our upcoming events for the community as well. So thank you again for having me today. I appreciate your time and support for the work we do at the Montgomery County Coroner's Office.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions?
I just have one quick question.
Yes, sure, sure.
I was, when you, when you had the three, you know, the three top deaths, I was actually surprised at falls. What, what really constitutes a death from fall? I mean, is it somebody that falls, is it more elderly that they fall and they, and they break something, or they, and it's hemorrhaging, or what's the?
All of the above.
Oh, really?
You got it.
I was like really curious, I was like really surprised that.
Yeah, it's a wide range, wide range of, you know, what we see in the falls, yeah. So it's elderly, it happens in the hospital, nursing homes, at home, in your driveway, walking, on the trails, all the above.
Wow.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't, if you were to, before you put that up there and asked, you know, what do you think the top three are, I would have never thought falls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A lot of people falling downstairs as well, two stairs, 12.
Yeah, so thank you, very forward of you.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just going to say, I want to, one, acknowledge your leadership over the last year or so. It's been great to work with you. And you've done so much work to really professionalize the office. You have a great team, and just the, the forward-looking, the proactive actions that you're taking to build awareness of things that can be preventable. You've really kind of changed the face of the coroner's office, so I want to commend you on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll reiterate, you've got a great team. Thank you for leading and innovating within the office. And ideally, we do learn something every day in your office, and we actually teach that to the living, so that we, you know, can, you know, prevent, you know, deaths where possible and really serve the greater health for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Okay. So final presentation, I'll ask Christina Miller, our Director of Public Health, to share some results from our community health assessment.
Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for inviting me and kudos to the person that scheduled the presentation from the coroner's office, right before the presentation from the public health office. Good timing. If you go to the next slide, I'm going to give you a little bit of a walkthrough of what we're going to talk about this morning. First and foremost, again, we're here to talk about the community health assessment that was recently completed in Montgomery County. We're going, I'm going to walk you through a little bit about why we do this, how we do this process, how we go about this process, who participated, some of the things that we learned in the process, and what you can expect to happen next. All right, next, next slide. So why we do this, and again, one more, bingo. So collecting, analyzing, and sharing data is actually a core function of public health work. Other pieces of work that we do include, you know, inspecting restaurants and other places where we eat food, or we swim, or where we, where we gather to make sure that they're safe places for us to be, that we prevent foodborne outbreaks. We're also the people that, you know, call you up when there's an outbreak of a, of a disease, to provide some education to help get you what you need. So that's some of the, some of the work that we do. But this data collection, the analysis, and the reporting back is, is a core function, and accredited health departments or health departments that are pursuing accreditation do this actually every five years as part of a cyclical process to assess what's happening in the community, to prioritize some, some community health needs, and then to work collaboratively with partners to, to plan and do work to address those priorities. More importantly, though, it gives us a clearer picture or a clearer understanding of what our residents are seeing and experiencing, right? So as the health department, we see a lot of data about health statistics, what has already happened, what exists. But you all know that often, our residents, the people in our communities, we see and experience things way before they show up in health statistics. So this helps us to understand a little bit more about what our residents are seeing and experiencing in their lives and in their communities to help prevent some of those, those health statistics from, from, from rising. Next slide. So how did we go about this process? So first, we assembled some of those health statistics, things like life expectancy, asthma prevalence, diabetes prevalence, data that is already in existence and available through sources like the CDC or the Pennsylvania Department of Health. That helps us to paint a picture of health in Montgomery County. Then we assembled a team to guide that, the rest of that process. And actually, I need to pause here for just a second. What I'm going, I get to be here with you this morning to share what we learned in this process and how we went about this process, but this was truly a team effort. Two of my colleagues here actually this morning, Community Health Program Manager Kristi Goodwin, our community, our Public Health Program Communications Manager Teresa Harris, these are just two of the many people that were involved in this process to examine the data, to engage our partners, and to make sure that, that folks knew about this opportunity and had the chance to participate, right? We also assembled a steering committee of internal experts within Health and Human Services and also partner organizations, more than 15 external organizations that really helped to guide and inform this process from start to finish. These are folks that informed the, the surveys that we administered, the focus groups that we held, they came back actually and helped us to look at the data after we collected it to help us understand a little bit more about what we were seeing in that data. And again, that last piece there is that primary data collection. We administered surveys, actually about this time last year, and we held a number of focus groups as well, I'll talk a little bit about those in a second. The way this shows up in the report, what you'll see, so the section, the report is actually broken out by three big sections. One is this background information, what we did and how we did it. The data that you see there, that secondary data collection, the data that's already available, the health statistics, and some information about the socio-demographics of our county, income, race, ethnicity, education, you'll find that in what we call the community health profile. So that's a summary of all of that existing data. Next, what you'll see is a summary, next slide. Next, you'll see a summary of all of the data that we collected, and that's that primary data. It's aptly named and easy to find, community health survey and focus groups, right? So if you want to go and find the health statistics, go to that community health profile. If you want to hear what people said, if you want to read what people said, go to the community health survey and focus groups. Ideally, you're going to both. Next slide. So who participated? So we actually had about 3,400 people respond to the survey. Of those, about 3,300 were qualified responses, so that means that the respondents were adults, they are residents of Montgomery County, and they asked, they answered at least one question beyond those two qual, those two questions. All right, next slide. As I mentioned, we also held focus groups across the county. You'll see the dates, the topics there, and how many people participated. We really tried to focus on topics that were not necessarily easily addressed in a survey, so maternal and infant health experiences, experiences and supports with behavioral health. Next slide. Now I want to talk a little bit about who participated, because whenever you see a report like this, you want to know, well, who was involved? Who participated, right? Here you can see the number of responses by municipality. So the larger the circle, the more responses we receive from that, from that municipality. So the Abington area, Lansdale, Norristown, Laurel and Marion, we received a lot of responses from those, those areas. Those areas are also more densely populated compared with other municipalities in the county. So we also looked at this as a percentage of the population. If you can go to that next slide, you'll see here, again, you'll see a higher rate of response in the eastern parts of Montgomery County, the northwestern corner and the southwestern corner, and a lower rate of response, so a smaller percentage of the, that municipal population participated. Next slide. We looked at the age breakdown of respondents compared to the county population overall. So that darker color there, that darker purple is the percent of the adult population in Montgomery County. The lighter color is the percent of survey respondents. So you'll see that we were underrepresented, or younger residents of the county were underrepresented in survey responses, and older members of the community were overrepresented in, in the survey responses. Next slide. We broke it down by race and ethnicity. And you'll see for the most part here, you know, the response rate relatively closely follows the racial and ethnic breakdown of Montgomery County population, with underrepresentation, slight underrepresentation among our Asian American and Pacific Islander residents and our Black and African American residents, and slight overrepresentation among Hispanic and Latino residents. Next slide. We asked about gender identification and sexual orientation. About three quarters of our respondents were women, about a quarter identified as male, and just over 1% identified as being outside of that traditional male female binary. And about 12% of our respondents identified as members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Next slide. We asked about language. About 12 and a half percent of the respondents indicated that they speak a language other than English when they're at home. We also made the survey available in multiple languages, and 158 of the surveys were completed in a language other than English, primarily Spanish. Next slide. It's important for us to understand also the multiple intersecting ways that people identify and understand that what we're seeing in the data through some of those lenses so that we can more deeply or better understand the experiences and perspectives of our residents. So we asked about things like whether the respondent is a co-parent, a single parent, whether they're an active-duty military member or a veteran, whether they identify as an immigrant, and more specifically as a refugee or an asylum seeker. We asked whether the individual lives with a physical, mental, health-related, or learning disability. We also asked about whether the, whether the respondent is actively experiencing homelessness, and you'll see here that we had respondents in all of those categories. Next slide. So what did we learn? So what we learned was that, you know, looking at the health statistics and the drivers of health, overall, Montgomery County compares really favorably to other counties in Pennsylvania and other counties across the country. The two visuals that you'll see here, those are from the 2024 county health rankings. And the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation has for years looked at several indicators of health across counties in the United States and then used that information to compare the counties. Again, Montgomery County is looking at those indicators among the healthiest in the United States and looking at the factors that influence our health. Again, that's things like income, access to healthcare, education, among the healthiest or having the most positive factors that inform health or influence health in the, in the United States. Next slide, please. But that same variability that exists across the state, across the Commonwealth and across the country, exists within Montgomery County, right? So if we look at something like diabetes prevalence or asthma prevalence, for example, even if you look at, look at life expectancy across the county, you will see variability in those statistics across the county when you look at the municipal or even the census tract level, okay? So here you'll see that those, the more saturated or the darker sections are where those conditions are more common, and the lighter sections are where those conditions are less common. Next slide. You can also break that out by race and ethnicity. So here we're looking at infant mortality by race and ethnicity and prenatal care utilization within the first trimester. And you'll see here, all the way, that, that slide that's on the And you'll see here, all the way, that, that slide that's on the left there, infant, rate of infant deaths by race and ethnicity, on the, all the way on the right there, you'll see the infant mortality rate for the entire county, and you'll see it's hovering at about four, four deaths per 1,000 of the population. But when you break that out, you'll see that there is, there are vast disparities, right? Affecting particularly our Black and African American infants in Montgomery County, and you'll start to see there also that the rate of infant mortality is starting to creep up in our Hispanic and Latino communities in Montgomery County. That is important because that, that informs us about where we need to go. That informs where, where the support is needed most, right? Similarly, when you look at prenatal care in the first trimester, you'll see that about 85% of white pregnant people are accessing prenatal care in that first trimester, and that, that percentage is much lower for our Black and Hispanic or Latino residents in Montgomery County. Okay? Next slide. And again, this is by age, and this is, these are responses to some of our survey questions about healthcare access, or healthcare needs, right? In the past year, were you able to get medical care when you needed it? When we break that out by age, you'll see that people at the younger end of that, the lower end of that age range, were less likely to report that they were, they were able to get healthcare when they needed it in the past year. They're also more likely to indicate that they needed, that they thought that they needed mental health services within the past year. Okay? So, and you'll see that this is, it just piles up, and it's really just to sort of give that, underscore that, that issue, that you can look at data in all different ways, and you'll see differences no matter how you break up the data, okay? Next slide. There are a few other key takeaways here, and I'll, I'll mention just two of them. One is that, you know, healthcare can be complex, it can be overwhelming, right? You know, it's one thing to access, you know, you know, get to your primary care when you need them. Sometimes when we're, when we're dealing with a health issue, whether it's a joyful one or a frightening one, having someone that can be there with us to walk us through that process and help navigate can be a game changer, and I'm sure we can all put ourselves in that shoes. And we heard that from, not just through the survey, but also through our focus group members, who really called out the presence of doulas and navigators, people that are helpers, that help us get through those experiences. The other one I want to point out is that, that everyday stressors can have a cumulative impact, and what you'll see, and cumulative impact on our health, right? So what you'll see in that, in the surveys in particular, we asked a lot of questions about everyday stressors, ability to afford things like childcare, ability to find housing that's affordable for you, challenges with paying, paying for the basics, right? We bring those up because that everyday stress, over time, has an impact on our health and well-being, on our mental health and our physical well-being. It actually affects us really at the cellular level. It affects our body's ability to fight off infection, for example, and stay healthy and well. So it's important to have an understanding really of not just the health statistics, the prevalence of conditions, but also what's driving those, okay? Next slide. We also asked about top community concerns. So we asked survey respondents, can you tell us your top three concerns for health in your community? About, just under 40% said mental health, just under a third said chronic disease, and just under 30% said environmental health and safety. And again, we can break this out by geography. Next slide. When we mapped this information, and this is just the top community health concern by municipality, you'll see that there's wide variability across the county, right? That light orangish color is mental health, the more saturated or more bolder green is environmental health and safety, the bolder blue is chronic disease, the lighter green there is drug and alcohol use disorders. Now, it's important to remember, this reflects the perspectives of the people who participated in the survey, right? So if 20 people in the municipality participated in the survey, this reflects their, their perspectives, right? And this also speaks to why it's so important to participate, so that we have this understanding of what's rising to the surface within our communities. Next slide. Actually, two. All right. So what do we do with this information? What can you expect next, right? Certainly, the Office of Public Health uses this information to plan our own programming and our work, but we want other people to use this too, right? This, this information belongs to everyone. So we are hoping that organizations that, that provide services in the community, that organize in the community, and provide support, are going to use this information to inform their work as well. To that end, we're going to be taking this out into our communities, right? This isn't something that lives on a website or on a shelf. We're actually going to be going out and holding community conversations to share back what we learned, and to get a little bit more perspective. How does this resonate? You know, particularly going to those places where maybe we had a little bit of a lower response rate. How does this resonate here? How does this work here? With that information, we plan to then develop what we call a community health improvement plan, and this is really an actionable plan to address some of those rising priorities in our communities. You'll start to see that coming into, into shape in the fall. Beyond that, we collected a lot of information, we collected a lot of data. The report, it's 120 pages, right? So there's a PDF version of the report, it's about 120 pages, but there's also an interactive web-based version that's easy to click through and understand. We want to take some of that information that we collected and do a deeper dive on some of the issues that we saw. And so we're going to start to use those community conversations to understand where to focus our attention, and then you'll start to see some of those reports beginning probably in the winter of next year. And again, looking at that through the lens of health equity. And when I say health equity, what I mean is that everyone has the resources and supports that they need to achieve their best health, right? So we want to, you know, we broke the data out a number of different ways in the report, but that's all with the intention or the eye towards really focusing our investment, focusing our work in the areas where it's most needed, okay? The report is officially available, so if you go to the next slide, you can get the full report at montgomerycountypa.gov/cha, C-H-A, Community Health Assessment. And if you have questions, please email us, publichealth@montgomerycountypa.gov. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Just, just a, just a comment. Thank you for your team's work on this. What I would like to see is, a lot of time goes into preparing to conduct these surveys, and I think we, when we were tracking how many people were responding, it was a little disconcerting that, you know, out of 850-plus thousand residents, that only 3,000 or so responded. So, you know, I'd like to, you know, next time we do this, really think about other ways to have tentacles in the community to, to increase engagement. So, but thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you.
I just want to add, very thorough report. I mean, great that we're doing this. Obviously, we have to add another section to it about falls.
Fourth coming, one of your efforts.
Yeah. But no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, definitely from a, I guess it depends the purpose of the survey, but it, statistics, statistically, 3,000 is great, right? I assume that's enough, but it's, I, it definitely, you need the right sample from the right places.
Exactly, exactly. So, I mean, this is our first go-around with the community health assessment. We were, we were really proud of it. I mean, certainly, we had a slightly higher target in terms of response rate, but we were really proud of this effort. I will also say, you know, the, the survey was long. We asked a lot of questions, you know, and there were a lot of lessons learned through this process, both from the standpoint of community engagement and connection, but also just, you know, how far, how many questions we really want to ask, and I'm, I'm almost certain that, you know, if we'd maybe asked maybe 10 fewer questions, we might have gotten a higher response rate. But again, that's part of the lessons learned, and that will all go towards our, our next time doing this.
Okay. Thank you for all your work, thank you for your team.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the first round of public comment. This is for today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. It's limited to three minutes. Do we have any commenters?
Sandra Levine.
Yeah. Not exactly.
Okay, we're going to hold it till after then.
David Morgan.
Yes, actually noon now. I'd like to first address public commenting. That's part of the agenda, and it would be good, I think, if the commissioners would have the highlights of today's topics about a week ahead of time to us, because I usually look and find 24 hours ahead of the topics in the agenda. So if, at the main points, we would know, we would know if it's a bond issue or something like that, we could come to the meeting, and we don't have to wait a while to speak. And then, also, if there's things to be broken down out of items, why not meet in that time a week ahead and say, well, this should be taken out of this because it's different than something else, and it helps streamline the meeting. So if that can be done, that'll be great. Then, I did talk with staff, there was a couple of missing YouTube videos, and apparently now they'll be going online from January, February. Then also, the general comment should be earlier, I think, because they have to wait more than two hours, maybe two and a half hours to speak.
Yeah. So we're not, we're not voting on any of that today, but...
You might consider it.
Yeah, if you can focus these on, on the topics that are on the agenda.
So on the agenda, we have B7 and B8 in the exhibits, Exhibit B. We have a combination of about $39.5 million for the Ridge Pike project. Mentioned some languages about, you know, reimbursement, also mentions about how it's a federal help with this payment. So I'm wondering if this is a 39 million straight into the planning commission budget, which is quite high, I think, in a way. Sometimes it's 60 million or more for the planning commission, so that would be good to know how high we're spending there. Also, in general, I mentioned about tax increases, and it's a, the point out that it goes up quite quickly on the line A of our tax bill, it's coming out just now. And so, it's about a geometric increase, that if you just take the percentages and add them up on a straight line, that's not what's happening. We're multiplying each year by, it's up 1.05 for 5%, 1.08 for 8%. So we have an acceleration of tax rate. And especially, I showed you throughout that meeting about how, well, here's first of all, the acceleration going up like this, from 3.4 mils up to 5.252 mils, it's accelerating each year because we're multiplying, not just adding. Then also, I have this chart, I showed which, the line A of our tax bills, and it's been reported in the commissioner videos, 5, 8, 8, 13, and then I say it's 9.69, because that stays on line A. It doesn't drop down and add the stagnant county college tax. So I, I find we're approaching 10% this past year, 13 and almost 10, so double digits two years in a row. So I think that's really a big concern for our taxpayers to consider. Then, also, the Justice Center project and library, there's so many question marks with the change orders, and also demolition is the first step, but there's so much more to really define in these projects, so they're capped, capital projects are capped, and our taxes are lower.
Thank you. That is a great comment. Any other commenters in this section? Okay. Yeah, I would just note, to your Ridge Pike question, you can tell me if I'm wrong, Lee, but for each of the contracts, you can read how much the federal government is reimbursing us, and it's 95% on the largest one, and 80% on the second one, and that's typically how a lot of these projects work. So, yeah, we can, we can talk a several times about, about how certain we are about getting that reimbursement, but I think fairly certain in this instance. So with that, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 6, 2025 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Headed by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to Section G, the personnel. Anthony Brew, our Chief Human Resources Officer, will present the personnel list.
Good morning, commissioners. You have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated March 19, 2025, with a timestamp of 10:59 a.m. All positions, excuse me, all positions have been reviewed and accounted for and presented for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the March 20, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Anthony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Section H, advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County, marked Exhibit A. Just with a slight change, we're tabling one of the sections, there needs to be some follow-up work on that, which is Section 1, or RFP 1. So I will make a motion to approve the advertisements of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A, with the exception of number one. Is there a second?
A second, that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there are two passes. Moving on to Section I, awards of contract under Exhibit B. Is there a motion to approve the contracts of awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
So moving on to Section J, the awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Exhibit C. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Okay. So, moving on to general comment.
Sandra Levine.
I commend the commissioners and the county for your response to the fire in Jenkins Town. I didn't even realize how many fire companies had covered it, so thank you for doing that. I live in an area where there's starter homes, there's a lot of immigrants who are working two jobs to try to make ends meet, and the ends aren't meeting for, for a number of them. They're, they're having trouble at the end of the month. And so I would respectfully ask that you carefully look at the budget as you're doing it, to make sure that what your, any increases in positions and so forth are really truly needed to address what the basic functions of the county are, the county residents, and these people are, are suffering by a 50% increase since 2020, as Mr. Morgan pointed out. And I would ask one thing to be added into public health, Lyme disease. I was hit by, by Lyme disease in the summer of 2023, lost a little bit of hearing, I'm still having skin issues, and even though there aren't herds of deer out there, small rodents can carry it, and I would love to see that broadcast for people, anything that's red, and it doesn't have to be a bullet hole, any red swelling, get yourself to a doctor and find out what's going on and get treatment early. But just to cover up your body when you're out, I was pulling weeds, doing nothing but flower gardening. So for the protection of everyone, and also, the wind, please do not push your trash container toward the wind in these gusty days. I had a trash can, they have videos of this, which is funny, but it wasn't funny at the time. It flipped, hit my nose, thank goodness I didn't have my glasses on, but it smashed my nose, threw me backwards, and I hit my head, and I now have a sound in my ear that will never go away. So do not go into the wind. Pull your trash container behind you if you're going into the wind. We've had a lot of gusty days, so I just pass that on to everybody for your protection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's important.
Thank you.
I feel like our public health communicator could do a good graphic on that.
Yeah, they tell me they've seen these things, there are funny people laugh, but I went flat on my back.
Oh, it's serious.
And hit my head on the sidewalk, all with a femur that has metal in me now, so.
Oh, very sorry to hear that. Sorry to hear that. Thank you for sharing.
David Morgan.
David Morgan of Ambler. And continuing on the health concerns, it was mentioned about the maternal need for Hispanic and Black Americans, and I remember, I mentioned Monka Mamas. Is that still going, or is it just seven doulas mentioned in that long-range report? I hope so, it's keeping going, so that those needs are met, and the low amount of young people involved in that survey is a concern.
And the low amount of young people involved in that survey is a concern too. And another thing is, I'd like to commend the commissioners. We have quarterly financial report from CFO. We have Office of Innovation that should help our taxes go lower. We have Help for the Homeless with Coordination. That's a good accomplishment, the commissioners that you have done. And the Commerce Department helping SPO, all good things there. But I think some other things related to health in our community is promotion of marriage and chastity in one's outlook and serving the fact of chastity is a very important thing to consider that these are long-term friendships in life that we develop, and are we committed to the person? So people don't talk about that too much, I know. But Pregnancy Resource Centers are able to help people who do have unexpected pregnancies. So I would think the county should promote chastity and resource centers. We're having a loss of humans. Also, in terms of people coming up and telling me things, someone mentioned to me that there was incident of ICE and a person was with a felon background that occurred apparently with the law offices here. So I heard about it, and I don't really know what's going on about it. I'm not sure if it's in the news, but it was a concern that that person had. So if you have any comments, that person would appreciate it. I do get comments from people as I walk around town because I'm walking with my dog. And Amber, I take care of plants with Plant Amber. We plant flowers now at spring. So this weekend, Saturday, we should have the planting of pansies going on with even young people helping out, even little kids. Like, I really like seeing that, but also I do a sort of thing with my dog. It's a slow dog, she's an older dog, and she, we're talking about the trash and watching trash. I have a grabber, a ten-dollar grabber. I go around usually with that with my dog because we want to have beautiful flowers with no trash in front of them. So we pick up, and I have a wagon, I put one can for trash, one is recyclable things, and one is for cigarette filters, which are quite toxic, and I find them all over the place. But I'm seeing improvement. So if more people have a dog, they've got a wagon with a grabber, and they can just never touch the stuff. You can find that you really can improve for your community. And I know that's recycling. If you look online, you can actually recycle these cigarette filters, and you can get some help for beautifying America. So our young kids live, are thriving, and they see a beautiful area. So thank you very much.
Mr. Morgan, what kind of dog do you have? I'm curious.
I've got cards about her. She's been blessed by the pastor. She's in front, she's a hound, and that's like the child decided to change the diagram to a dalmatian. So the dalmatian spots aren't quite like a fire dog would look like. It's sort of brownish, a little bit grayish, but that's her combination. She's twelve, so she moves slowly. She's patient with me, she'll slow up, but I gotta do something like water or pickup.
Hopefully we'll see her in Ambler one day.
Yeah, in fact, the police say.
Oh, you have?
Yes. And the police say, oh, he's the guy with a dog. The dog's famous. You're the guy with a dog, right?
There we go.
Her name is.
What's her name?
Pardon me, I'm talking so much. Her name's Bailey.
Bailey.
My daughter thought the name's Bailey is twelve years old.
Right.
I just want to comment on, I, I've heard the same. I'm trying to get more detail around this individual that's a felon and was blocked by not being addressed by ICE. So I'm trying to get more information on that as well.
Any comments?
Cindy Levy.
Good afternoon.
More support, bodyguard.
Yeah. He has a shirt. But I, I want to say a few words about my concerns around immigration. I came today because I'd heard from several different sources that this was an opportunity for public comment on a proposition that had been made about welcoming, county welcoming community. So I'm kind of, I was hoping to learn more from other people about what they are, their opinions, and what has been proposed and what is going on. But I do want to say a few words. I have been involved with immigrant rights and immigration since two thousand seventeen up in Bucks County. There was an organization, a group of us that organized around the first ICE raids that happened up there, and I have been very active ever since. I am an accredited representative with the Department of Justice. I went to Villanova and got that accreditation during COVID. And now I am organizing with a lot of concerned individuals here in Montgomery County. I live in Lower Gwinnett, I'm sorry. This past week, I went out with representatives of the Warrie Center, which is the Korean Community Center Immigrant Rights Organization in Lansdale. And we visited a number of businesses and a number of restaurants. I've also talked with a number of other immigrants in our area at the CICADA meeting last month, and I am extremely concerned, and I want to report on the level of fear that is in our community, not just among undocumented people, but among anyone who may be targeted by their accent, the color of their skin, or where they're working. People are often not showing up for work. Children are afraid to go to school. And there is an increasing level of fear as the rhetoric seems to be increasing and as the policies that have been handed down at the federal level increase. I welcome the idea, if we are considering it, of a welcoming community, which basically, as I've understood it, means that our local first responders, our local police, our municipal police will not do the job of ICE, will not enforce the federal immigration rules. That separation is under attack right now, but extremely, extremely important. It is important if we who live in this community are going to feel safe that if I see someone being harassed across the street when I leave here, I do not hesitate to call the appropriate police because I'm afraid I will also be bringing a potential ICE raid into a community, and I don't know how vulnerable other people are. This is very important. I also just want to say that in the sixties and seventies, I was married to a Frenchman. I lived in France. My children and grandchildren are French citizens and still live there. What was coming to the surface in France in the sixties and seventies was the realization that during World War Two, where France had been invaded and was controlled, half of it, by the Nazi, Nazis from Germany, by the end of the war, the local French police were the ones who cooperated and collaborated and sent seventy-five thousand French Jews to Auschwitz, and seventy-two thousand five hundred were murdered there. They did not wait, this was not the, the Nazis or the federal government. This was local police. I've seen a trend in this direction. There is tremendous pressure from the federal government on our local municipalities. So please give us a chance to explore this further in the future and talk about it because the time to do that is now. Thank you very much.
Next comment.
Kathleen Frank.
Hi, my name is Kathy Franks. I've lived in Sotterton for, same house, for forty-three years. I also want to speak in support of welcoming community, excuse me, county policy. And I just want to be clear, bad things do happen, even to good people, but it is a hoax to blame immigrants who are running for safety and protection for their families. I was raped as a teenager by an American citizen who came from a long line of Americans. My daughter was held up at a convenience store by an American citizen from a long line of Americans. So again, bad things do happen, but it is a malicious hoax to try to blame immigrants for bad actors and bad actions. There are statistics that show immigrants are less likely to be guilty of crime. Lies and repeating false accusations is a travesty that I hope no one in this room will be guilty of. I am a Christian. My God teaches me to have mercy and to love justice. Lying about people who need our help and support is not justice. Unless you're a Native American, you're an immigrant, or the offspring of immigrants, how dare we deny the same opportunities that have been afforded to us? Thank you.
David Keel.
Hi, I'm David Head from Hatper. And I also want to support a welcoming community. I believe that there are people in what passes itself off as media and in our government who are lying about immigrants to create fear and loathing. And I think when you create fear, then you create a willingness of people to allow their own, to allow the government, to weaken their own civil liberties. And when you create hatred, you are more than willing to allow the government to take away the civil liberties of the people that you're being told to hate. And you can see that now because we are now rounding up people without any trials and sending them off to what is actually black sites. And I think, I agree with what everybody else is saying. I think this is leading toward something that you can actually call fascism. Thank you.
Robert Spence.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Winder, for the appreciation you showed my niece Ty Spence, acknowledging her success as a writer, successful writer, author, writing about her experience of living with fabulous, with autism and intellectual disability, diabetes one. And I really appreciate that because that shows that government works. Government works when they care about the most vulnerable in our community, and you highlight that every opportunity you, you, you give us and you show us who you are. We appreciate that. And it's just with so much kindness that I thank you, my family, thank you. Because the last year we came here broken, we wore T-shirts, Justice for Ty, because we thought that we were going to get justice in the criminal court, and we did not. But God showed us another way, and you introduced us to the Human Health and Human Service, and they helped Ty come out of nursing home and live in community, you know, like acknowledge community interactions. They're here in support of her. They run a program where she gets care in the community in a private home that is really beautiful, better than my house. And she, she has twenty-four-hour caretakers, twenty-four-hour nurse. She, she eats the food, her, her diabetes being managed. And I'm just so, so grateful for that. And I appreciate that because that happened because people were in the government. And thank you again for acknowledging my success in business. But I do want to acknowledge that, that volunteer fire department program for tax credit, Commissioner DeBello, in Pottstown I applied. And not only did I have to pay to become a member, which kind of conflicts with the rate, the tax rate deduction that you get if you have to pay. And then on top of that, I was interviewed three times, twice by the police commissioner, and then told that I had to wait and couldn't volunteer because the mayor's office was very busy. Mayor does not have an office, okay? And so I wanted to volunteer. I wanted to give my service. I, the Commissioner of McKeja, I know Airtable. I know how to integrate API and ZAPs and makes and artificial intelligence. I know all of that. I'm acknowledged across the world in Australia, but my own community turns their back on me and acknowledged by telling me that this program isn't available because of what? I don't know. There's so many people that want to volunteer that look like me, right? That are not allowed to volunteer for the fire department. Look into yourselves, Pottstown Fire Department. And I don't remember.
Is that Pottstown or Goodwill or which part?
Goodwill. Goodwill. It shouldn't be barriers if there's a program that'll allow the community to volunteer to get a tax break. And I mean, you shouldn't even have to pay for it.
Well, I, we're, let's talk after the meeting.
Sure.
So I could understand a little, because I don't want to take up, but let's talk after the meeting.
Okay. So again, thank you, Community Interactions, Commissioner Winder, you are Godsend. Thank you.
All right, so that's it for public comment. Do we have any closing comments?
So I have, so I wanted to, I know I talked a lot about Women's History Month, but I appreciate everyone giving us a little time to acknowledge that. I just want to acknowledge the people that make this whole thing go in, in Montgomery County, especially in our Commissioner's office. And so I see a few of my colleagues here that I want to acknowledge. So Becca, who supports Commissioner McKeja, Rayah, who supports me, Gabby, Megan, Stephanie, Christine, Mary, Commissioner DeBello already gave you a shout out. I don't see Kim here. Oh, Kim, you're right there, right? But, you know, these are the women that are working alongside us every day to make sure that we can do the great work that we do. And so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and thank all of you. And Nellie, who's now on, on our team, so thank you for all that you do. Just wanted to publicly share that.
Got anything? Okay. I think we're good. Yeah, for those of you who came to talk about immigration policies, you've got Nellie right here to answer your questions. And we've very actively been thinking about how we can support a hundred thousand members of our community who are foreign, foreign or immigrants here in Montgomery County and very much recognize that our county would not thrive without them. And we want to do everything we can in this uncertain time, recognizing that it's both, you know, it's, it's regardless of status in which people have concerns, including there are cases now in the courts where the president has defied court order in terms of turning around a plane of whether or not individuals were rightfully deported, whether or not an individual with a green card received due process. So it's, it's a very concerning time, and we're going to do everything we can adequately represent our residents here in Montgomery County.
Commissioner McKeja, point of privilege.
Yeah.
Yvonne, I just have, how can I forget Yvonne of Hornsupers? Sorry.
Yes, okay. So we will see everyone on April third for our next meeting, which is in Long Island Township Building at six PM. And with that, I will move to adjourn the March twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Seconded by.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll move on to salaries. I was having so much trouble here to get together.
Oh, fire, which one?
No idea. Ready to be done with Kevin's here. Hopefully, he's good, Kevin, today.
Continue call to order. If you guys don't like taking a seat or if you're having a conversation, feel free to step out. We have one more meeting to do, a brief meeting. I'm going to call to order the...
We have another meeting.
March 20th, so it's March 20th, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board, seeing all members present. Is there any public comment?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming to see the boys. They appreciated your presence downstairs. So last August, you all made a historic investment in the Public Defender's Office. And I applauded that at the time. I continue to applaud that. Today's Salary Board includes positions for the Public Defender's Office and for the DA's office for, and one of those unfunded mandates that we are facing coming up. And again, I applaud and I appreciate that. What I need to point out is that since November, I've been asking for positions in our office. 18 attorneys to the, or 16 attorneys to the Public Defender's Office, two more today. In that same period of time, we've gotten one part-time position. Our caseload is, of course, about double the Public Defender's Office. We handle investigations. We also handle a lot of other matters. And I'll point out, one of the positions that we've been asking for is the appellate Assistant Chief in there. And there are people that I can recruit to come into that position. There's a lot of people that are leaving federal government right now, and it's an ideal time to try to bring somebody with that expertise in. We've been six months, 40% staff in that unit. And I'll note that one of the things that they cover, and one of the reasons why I applaud the investment in the Public Defender's Office, is occasionally people will say that their representation has been ineffective, and we end up representing the public defenders and other private lawyers in those cases, and that's handled by the appellate. We need the staffing, and I hope that as we move forward, that you make public safety in our office a priority in the investments that you're making in our system. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Christine Laura.
Laura.
Good afternoon now, commissioners. As we commemorate this week, the landmark Supreme Court decision in Gideon v. Wainwright, we are reminded of our duty to protect the constitutional rights of Montgomery County's most vulnerable citizens. And I just wanted to say that your unwavering commitment to this cause empowers us to uphold justice in this community and to deliver essential services, reinforcing our shared dedication to equity and fairness. The addition of new positions today will ensure that we're prepared to manage the influx of court proceedings tied to Act 44 that DA Steele just mentioned, and we are so grateful. Additionally, I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to you for approving, I hope, the investigator position. Just for some context, and I think it's important to say that previously, just three employees within our department have been expected to manage thousands of necessary investigation requests annually, impacting both our adult and juvenile units, that last year disposed of over 7,000 cases. So just a really significant amount of work that has fallen to just three individuals. This vital investment not only demonstrates your commitment to supporting our employees, which we appreciate, but to righting old wrongs. And it also underscores your dedication to the county's most vulnerable. On behalf of my office, I thank you again for your visionary leadership in this area and your steadfast support. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
That's all.
Celebrity commenters today. Usually, it's a different composition. But look, I just want to say, thank you both for your incredible leadership of your offices. I think all of the concerns that you raise are ones that we take very seriously. And I know, especially on the role you mentioned, this is a moment where we can recruit great people for the federal government, so we've got to move quickly. And I think, you know, the team's considered about 150 positions that we're going through to prioritize in terms of what we can fund this year. So, you know, your comments are very, you know, well-taken and add to the urgency of that. So if anyone else has any questions or comments on this thing, everything? Okay. So I will bring up Anthony Brew to present the Salary Board list.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a five-page document dated March 19, 2025, with a timestamp of 10:59 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the Salary Board list as presented by our Director of Human Resources, Anthony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Say it by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. With that, any closing comments? Is there a motion to adjourn the March 20 meeting of Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.